Five four nine fifty six point ninety five against the William S. Hart High School District.
Second.
And just for clarification, that is claim number two one two two dash sixteen L. So we have a motion by Mrs. Storey, a second by Mr. Messina. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
On to student expulsions. Okay, I move student expulsion report twenty two twenty three forty, twenty two twenty three forty one, twenty two twenty three forty two, twenty two twenty three forty three, twenty two twenty three forty four, twenty two twenty three forty five.
Second.
And just for clarification, that is a motion by Mrs. Storey with a second by Mr. Messina to approve the ratifications of student expulsion reports number twenty two slash twenty three dash forty, dash forty one, dash forty two, dash forty three, dash forty four, and dash forty five. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. We will now reestablish our quorum. Debbie?
Mr. Messina?
Here.
Dr. Moore is not joining us tonight, Mrs. Storey?
Here.
And Mr. Jensen?
Present. So we do have a quorum. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Golden Valley High School Principal Sal Freitas to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have it quiet, please. Thank you, Principal Freitas. Thank you for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Next on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Well, second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Next...
Sorry.
Minutes of the May seventeenth meeting are up for approval.
I move the approval of the minutes of the May seventeenth meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve the minutes of the May seventeenth, 2023 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. All right, we're going to move into recognitions by the board. We have two outstanding athletic teams to recognize tonight. Mr. Coolman is going to lead the recognition process. We'll ask him to move forward with it.
Absolutely. We are so pleased to have so many of our student athletes here with us today, and the fact that this year has been an exceptional year for the Hart District in terms of our athletic accomplishments. In fact, there's a university nearby here that uses the term champions made here, and we were going to actually adopt that for the Hart District until we realized that it was copyright. So we've changed it a little bit, but to sort of get us all in the mood, we have a little video that just summarizes the amazing accomplishments of our student athletes in the Hart District. Please listen. That deserves some applause, don't you think? I'm not sure if that's been sent out yet, but we're going to send it out to y'all, and we encourage you to send it to everybody to let them know what great things are happening in the Hart District. Tonight, we want to specifically take a moment to have the board have the opportunity to recognize four programs: track and field, swim, boys volleyball, and baseball. And we're going to take those in that order. And the way that I'd like to do it is, I might invite the governing board, if you wouldn't mind, you can come and you can stand over here, and we have some seats for you here, because we have so many champions that we might not, you might not want to be standing the entire time. But if you wouldn't mind, you can come down here, and what I will do is, I will share a little bit about each of these teams. We will invite the coaches up, and then we'll call the student athletes up. They will receive a certificate, shake hands with our board, and remain up here until the entire team is up, and then we'll take a picture to celebrate with the board your great accomplishment. Okay? So let's begin with track and field. So tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize three champions that we have in track and field. First is two young women from the 2023 Golden Valley Track and Field Team who has a, excuse me, the two young women from the 2023 Golden Valley Track and Field who has a team with a runner that finished up this year in Division Two. Freshman Marley Scoggins made her presence known as an amazing up-and-coming track star, winning the CIF Division Two title in the 100 meters. So if I could have Marley Scoggins come up? Marley? Congratulations. Right there, we'll get you your certificate. Congratulations, Marley. Okay, and then we have sophomore Kira Donovan, who reached a personal best of 130 feet, three inches, to win the CIF Southern Section Division Two title for Discus. And with these two youngsters, the future is bright for Golden Valley Grizzly Track. I might ask, actually, Principal Sal Freitas, you want to come up and be part of the picture? He's busy taking pictures. All right, one more. Congratulations to the amazing lady. Congratulations, Marley and Kira. So next, we have a student athlete that has accomplished something that had never been achieved in the history of high school sports in California. I'm going to say that again. This has never been achieved in the history of high school sports in California. Castake High School junior Megan Humphries won the CIF Southern Section Division Three titles in four separate events: 200 meters, long jump, triple jump, and high jump. Megan then went on to win the CIF Masters Championship in high jump. Then at State, she was a one-woman team, as she powered Castake to a third-place finish for all divisions. An outstanding finish for an outstanding athlete. Can you please welcome up and celebrate Ms. Megan Humphries? Coach Eric, do you want to come be part of this? Coach, did you like second or are you good?
Okay, you're good. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so now let's turn our attention to swim. So we have two champions to recognize this evening. These two young people compete in events that are filled with some of the best freestyle swimmers in Southern California, because they compete in the CIF Southern Section Division One. The 500-meter freestyle is a mix of speed and stamina, as the athletes swim up and back ten times in an Olympic-sized pool. Hart High School junior Lily Dormans was able to hold off the competition in the 500 meters freestyle to win the CIF Southern Section Division One crown. And to talk more about Lily and her accomplishments, I'd like to invite up Hart Swim Coach Tim Lim. Tim, are you here? Come on up, Tim. And Lily, is Lily with us here this evening? Why don't you come on up, and while Coach is talking about you, you can say hello to the board.
I just want to say that what Lily has done, her achievement is outstanding, but it's a result of the hours and hours of work that she's put in in the pool. She spends hours of time swimming thousands of yards a day, and swimming right now is an outlet for what will eventually transfer to her adult life. So I just want to congratulate Lily on her outstanding achievement.
But we're not done. While the 500-meter takes both speed and stamina, the 50-meter and 100-meter freestyle is all about a salt of speed and power. West Ranch senior Jonathan Gim got off to a good start and used his skill and power to do the rest in winning both the 50-meter and the 100-meter freestyle race. And to talk about Jonathan and his accomplishments is West Ranch head coach Kirsten Livingstone. Kirsten, come on up. And Jonathan, come on up.
Hello. Jonathan Gim has been the rock. We've had a lot of success with the West Ranch Boys program after, for the last four years, and he's been the rock and the center of that program. Because he is a natural-born leader, he is incredible in the water. I don't know if anyone's made it to a swim meet, but he just, he's fish-like. I don't know if you're supposed to say that, but he's fish-like, the way he moves in the water. So he is going to be greatly missed. He is on to swim at Brown, so he is on to big things, but we'll miss him here at West Ranch, and he's awesome.
Congratulations. And I love the fact that tonight we heard someone being called fish-like, and that's a compliment. All right, and on to our boys volleyball. So tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize the 2023 Hart High Varsity Boys Volleyball Team for an amazing season that culminated in a CIF Southern Section Division Four championship. Hart lost only three total games in five matches on their way to the title. This amazing team had many players working hard to earn the championship, including two members named to the All CIF Team, Isaac Kim and Hank Kaufman, and one Owen Donner. Did I say that correctly, Owen? Doffner? Okay, forgive me, who was not only voted on as the CIF Division Four Player of the Year, but also was awarded with Second Team All-American honors. So tonight, we honor and congratulate the 2023 Hart High Boys Volleyball Team. And here to talk more about this amazing squad is head coach and CIF Division Four Coach of the Year, Loy Mueller. And Loy, you can call the students up one at a time, okay?
Just before I get into the names, this is a group of guys. Obviously, their physical abilities were way above teams that I've coached in the past, that I've worked with in the past, but also just the relationships that these guys have with each other. Ten out of thirteen were seniors, so it's quite the big group to have in a program for a long time. And all the success they've earned this season was well-deserved, and I'm really proud of them for that. I'm going to read everyone's names. Guys, when you hear your name, come up, come get your certificate, and wait for your photo. Tanner Andrew. Colin Bailey. Brandon Durham. Francis DiMano. Owen Doffner. Nick Escalante. Hank Kaufman. Isaac Kim. Ariel Martinez. Max Merlow. Gabe Stokes. And there are two that are not here. Their names are Craig Irons and Owen Suchek.
Congratulations to the boys volleyball team. Just want to point out that Mr. Dottermont was clearly the shortest person in that photo, so. All right, and finally, wow, what an exciting finish to the school year. Let's talk a little bit about baseball. Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize the 2023 Castake Baseball Team for an incredible season. A season that we take note of the fact, that this was the first graduating year, and in that year, they had two championships, they brought home two championships for the Coyotes. The first was the CIF Southern Section Division Six Championship, where the team earned the title by winning by an average of over eight runs over their opponents. And then it was on to the State Southern Regional Division Five playoffs, where, after easily taking care of their first two games in the finals, Castake won in dramatic fashion with a walk-off run in the bottom of the ninth to achieve that championship as well. This is a team that literally grew up together, as this is just the school's second season of varsity baseball, and to celebrate this with two titles and a 27-win season is simply amazing. So tonight, we honor and congratulate the 2023 Castake Baseball Team, and here to talk more about this great group of students is head coach Darrell Davis. Coach Davis.
Thank you for having us tonight. Just so excited for our boys. They've worked so hard, and for us to be a second-year varsity team and have kids come from other areas and transfer into our school, and for these boys to be able to come together and have almost like a brotherhood now, it's just been simply amazing. They brought into exactly what the coaches brought to the table to them, they brought into what we were teaching, and again, just amazing accomplishment by them and what they've done. They've worked so hard. We've had a lot of different obstacles to deal with from our field and other different things, but they stayed the course, and we're very excited about that, and we're very honored to be here tonight and for you guys to honor these boys for their accomplishments. A 27-7-1 record this year, and, you know, winning the last game in a dramatic fashion to a team that was 20-0, and had only given up seven runs in their season, and to walk off with that win and win a state title, quite amazing, and we're very proud of our boys. So call your name, please come up. Matthew Erhart. Falcon Barrett. Nathan Baru. Jacob Bond. David Colano. Tyler Collins. Jacob De La Cruz. Dominic Espinoza. Ivan Estrada. Alejandro Flores. Tyler Furde. Aaron Gonzalez. Tyler Hahn. He's out of town right now, but James Lafferty. And another one that's out right now at his other college, Brayden Lester. Anthony Luna. Brody Lust. Sammy here? No, he's not. Sammy is not here. Sammy McMullin. Jack Raiber. And the Division Six Most Valuable Player, Georgie Sakata. Ethan Silva. He's not here tonight, Steven Souza. Oh, he is here. I'm sorry. I didn't see you back there. Should have known with the hair. Diego Sprouts. William Stanley. Jack Tioli. Luke Thompson. Travis Van Ness. And I want to thank my coaches. This would not be done without those guys back there. Devin Davis. Jeff Padell. Rudy Vasquez.
Congratulations, Coach. Thank you, thank you. Good to see you, man. Sounds good. Congratulations. Wow. Is there anybody left at Castake High School? All right, congratulations, everybody.
He gets to vote twice. Thank you.
Okay, that was really special to have all those successful athletes with us tonight. And they're gone now, so we can move on with the board meeting. Communications is the next section of our agenda for tonight's meeting, and the first item is Board Member Reports, and I will go first tonight. I have prepared some comments that I'd like to share with everyone. The board recently adopted a new strategic plan that calls us to prepare every student to be opportunity-ready. Supporting every student means fostering a culture of inclusiveness, kindness, and respect, which is our core value of caring. This means we recognize and acknowledge all student groups for their important part in the history of our district, community, and nation. The Hart District is made up of students from a wide variety of cultures and perspectives, and they all deserve respect and to be honored for their positive contributions. For many years, the Hart District recognized the accomplishments of its diverse student population by board members sharing positive affirmations in board meetings during the time set aside for board comments at the start of every board meeting, such as is taking place right now. In recent years, the Hart District Governing Board passed formal resolutions recognizing and commemorating three select groups. The practice of acknowledging specific groups through formal resolutions largely began in 2021. Three groups recognized by formal resolutions recently include Black History Month, beginning in 2021, LGBTQ+ Pride Month, beginning in 2021, and Hispanic Heritage Month, beginning in 2022. All three of these groups deserve to be recognized, but the practice of separating out some groups for celebration through formal resolutions creates a concern about leaving some groups out. If our goal is to celebrate our unity and diversity, i.e., One Heart, what is the practical effect of the governing board neglecting to formally recognize a particular group through a resolution? To answer that question, we need to look no further than the recent criticism of the governing board for not adding the Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders to the list of three groups that have been honored already by formal resolution. Rather than celebrating unity and One Heart, we see anger, bitterness, and division. Some might say, so just formally acknowledge everybody. I respectfully suggest that this recommendation is unrealistic. The list of potential honorees is excessively long and growing daily. To address this concern, I would like to invite the governing board to consider the model enacted by our colleagues in the New Hall School District. New Hall has created a single resolution, adopted once annually, that includes a list of groups officially recognized by national and state governments. The focus is on how the contributions of all these groups add to the unified whole of the Hart District. I would like to suggest that we return to the practice of board members highlighting individual heritage months during the time set aside for board member comments. With that in mind, I do want to acknowledge that June is LGBTQ+ Pride Month, a month set aside to acknowledge and commemorate LGBTQ+ Pride. Last month was AAPI, Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which pays tribute to the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched our nation's history. We have students, families, and staff members in the Hart District represented by both of these groups, and they need to hear that the governing board respects and appreciates their positive contributions to our district's success. And let's not forget, the next Monday is Juneteenth, the holiday that commemorates the emancipation of enslaved people in the United States. On that date in 1865, in the aftermath of the Civil War, enslaved people were declared free under the terms of the 1862 Emancipation Proclamation. This is a date worth remembering and celebrating. That concludes my report. Mrs. Storey, do you have a report?
I do. I could go into my lecture on how the Emancipation Proclamation didn't really free anyone, but we won't do that tonight. Okay, graduation cheers are fading. Now we're gearing up for the 23-24 school year. I was privileged to attend and hand out diplomas to Castaic's first graduating class, as well as Golden Valley and Valencia. Among the festivities of this last few weeks was a humbling holiday, Memorial Day. Memorial Day honors those who died in the service of their country, a sobering tribute. Today's Flag Day. You're supposed to fly your flag. My flag flies every day, unless it falls down, and then I have to get a new one. But every day, it's up and flying. This month, we are celebrating and recognizing Pride Month and Juneteenth. My hope for this year, this school year, and our meetings is that we treat each other with kindness, with respect, and we work together for the best school year ever. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Storey. Mr. Messina.
Okay, well, before I get actually rolling with mine, I would like, you know, we've got great organizations and great bands and great sports teams, as you just saw, but did anybody see Sogus High School Marching Band in Washington, D.C.? Because if you missed it, we're going to show it to you right now.
The next up, this is a rival from my high school back in the day. I was a Hart grad. This is Sogus, right next door to us, appearing for the first time outside their home state of California, the Sogus High School Marching Band, the Centurions. This resilient band has overcome severe challenges over the past few years. They thank their parents, school administration, and the city of Santa Clarita for being there and getting them here today.
In the rain. I mean, I love it. I love it when I see stuff like that come together for our students, and that is a great honor to get to go back there. I hope we realize how much of an honor that actually is. All right, so today is Flag Day, as you said. It's also my dad's birthday, and I shamefully say it's one of the ways I remember it's his birthday because it's Flag Day too, so it works out well for me. Flag Day, on June 14, 1977, the Continental Congress approved the design of a national flag. Flag Day's origins can be traced back to the 19th century. The idea was first proposed in 1885. It occurred at a school in Wisconsin where students participated in activities honoring the flag. In 1889, George Balt, a New York City kindergarten teacher, also planned a Flag Day celebration at his school. And if you do some of your own research, it just grew from there, and this is what we have today. We honor that flag for a lot of reasons. What does the flag represent? The flag's become a hated symbol by those who take this country and its meaning for granted. It takes the meaning to be an American for granted. Many have died under those colors for the freedom of many, people of all colors, lifestyles, walks of life. That's why so many are trying to get here to this country. They see the freedoms and the liberties that we've had, and they want part of that. Some of you here tonight may not feel that way about our flag. You know, I would admonish you to take the time to look at what this country has done over the years, what it's done for other countries, what it's done for other people. You'd find that the good far outweighs the bad, and we continually move to make things better. Remember, we're trying to be a more perfect union. We didn't start off perfect. We have to keep working at it. You have the freedom to come here. You can thank us. You can call us names without going to jail. That happens in other countries. You have the right to ask your government to make changes to protect you and more. All those freedoms that you're not afforded in other countries under other colors or Some of you are here tonight, as I saw on Facebook, because of something that was not on the agenda. Mr. Jensen has addressed it, and I think he's done a great job addressing it. I don't have a wedding ring on. It's too small. I've grown a bit over the years. I need to get it fixed, though. However, it doesn't mean I no longer am married. It doesn't mean I don't love my wife. I love her deeply. It doesn't require a ring or marriage license to show her that I love her, to be with her, to honor her, as is with a resolution. Resolution's a piece of paper. But what does it really mean to honor these groups that we were talking about tonight? I'd protect my wife with my life, even without the ring, even without the piece of paper. We have a yearly anniversary. It also means nothing unless I'm truly committed to her, and I'm truly committed to the marriage. You know, you look around this room, you see the Hart logo, you see our banners. The banner, the flag, the logo, they represent the Hart District, the students, the staff, the community. We trustees were chosen by the community through the process of elections. We represent all students. We represent all staff. There's no emphasis on certain groups or groups. All children should have equal opportunities to succeed. Our website says that we serve all with one heart. I believe that to be totally true. That includes all. If you feel slighted, I would say, don't just look outward. Look within. Are you, students, staff, doing everything you can do to have a more perfect school experience? Do you bring real solutions to the table, or you just complain? Bring solutions that are good for all, not just good for some. As Mr. Jensen suggested, we have so many different groups: black, Asian, white, Hispanic, differently-abled, LGBTQI+, all with members that have made some great accomplishments in our district, community, and in the world. They deserve to be recognized. The district provides programs for drug awareness, mental health support, food assistance, many peer support groups, all without charging, without special treatment based on color, sexual orientation, citizen status. The resolution process seems to offend more people than it honors, because some group complained that they're left out. Who decides which group gets a resolution and which ones don't? How do you make it fair and equitable to all? There's over 142 officially-recognized groups, ethnicities, in the U.S. There's over 1,500 potential resolutions that you could pass at this board, and they commemorate all kinds of groups, peoples, and so on. Let me just name a few for you. There's 17 Hispanic Days in one full month. There's 14 Separate Women Days in one month. There's 13 Separate Disability Days in six months. Eight Islamic Days. 11 Days in one month for our Jewish friends. 22 Days in three months for the LGBTQIA+ community. 35 Days in one month for the black community. So in closing, I don't speak for the whole board, I realize that, but I'm sure you'll agree with my next comment. The elected officials and the people at this dais care about all our students. We don't care what color you are. We don't care what ethnicity you are. We don't care what religion you are. We don't even care about your socioeconomic background. We care that you have an equal opportunity to succeed. Our decision is not based on any of that, whether it's about black history, Juneteenth, women's history, Asian-American, Hispanic, Italian heritage. We honor your accomplishments in what we do every day here at the dais when we make decisions, because we're making decisions for all kids. So in whatever holiday you celebrate or event you choose to recognize and celebrate, may it be a safe one, may it have the desired result you were looking for, and thank you as usual for your support for the district. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Messina.
May I say something really short? I've already gotten two messages. The Emancipation Proclamation only freed slaves. I can't believe how quickly this goes. Only freed slaves in those states that had left the Union. So therefore, declaring those slaves freed in states that we had no power over, we, the North, had no power over, really freed no slaves. It did make the war come to a head, and things happen. But two people already got me on that. Why am I saying that the Emancipation Proclamation didn't free anyone? It happens quickly here on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our Employee Association Leadership. First is HDTA, Hart District Teachers Association President John Minkus. John, are you here? I don't see John or a representative. We do have a speaker card. Diane Zimmerman. Diane, did you want to speak? We don't have a presentation by Mr. Minkus, however. All right, Diane, you may go ahead and begin.
Actually, I just want to do my usual Minkus time. He brings out, Minkus brings this out in me, and she's a nice man. I would just like to urge everybody to, first of all, get out and support school choice, get it on the ballot. It's the most, oh, gosh, I don't know, it's pretty dang important that we support school choice. And if anyone has not read Standing Up to Goliath by Rebecca Friedrichs, it's time that you read it, because I've been talking about it for a long time, and at least take a look at it, give it a chance, and you may learn a lot about our school boards, government school boards, and government schools. I'm not wanting to get rid of the government unions, and, thank you, government unions and government schools. I'm not trying to get rid of public schools. I like to go back, to go back away from the government, that's all. I'm not for getting rid of you guys. I'm for getting rid of what you have to put up with. So school choice, very important that everyone support that and get it on the ballot, and that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is California School Employees Association, Chapter 340. Okay. I didn't see President Dennington, but it's now confirmed that she's not here. So we'll move on now with our special items, and we have one special item. It's the Henry Mayo New Hall Foundation Scholarship Awards for 2023. Mr. Coolman, would you please introduce this?
Absolutely. I have two special guests here today, I believe, to speak to this, and I would invite them to...
I don't need you.
Well, you can come, you can both come along, but please come share with us the good news about our awards.
Good evening. I'm Janet McInnany, Senior Sponsor Administrator for the California, California, the Santa Clarita, yeah. See, now I'm all flustered. Santa Clarita Valley Scholarship Foundation. Good evening, Superintendent Coleman, President Jensen, and members of the governing board. Thank you for this opportunity to seek your approval to pay the 57 recipients from the class of 2023 for the Henry Mayo New Hall Foundation Scholarships. The funding was received and approved by the board on December 7, 2022. The scholarships were awarded at Canyon, Castaic, Golden Valley, Hart, Sogus, Valencia, and West Ranch, with seven awards at each school. Two at $3,000, two at $3,500, two at $4,500, and one at $6,000. Two scholarships were awarded at the Academy of the Canyons, Bowman Learning Post Academy, and Sequoia School in the amounts of $1,250 and $1,500. The total for the scholarships awarded this year is $207,000. The Santa Clarita Valley Scholarship Foundation will submit our year-end report to the New Hall Foundation in September. To accompany the report, we select... To accompany the report, we select a recipient from one of the high schools to showcase. This year, the recipient to be showcased is Ella Shin. She is one of the $4,500 scholarship winners from West Ranch High School. Ella was very active and cheer, ASB, and was nominated by her teachers to be a Safe School Ambassador. She also gives back to her community through her involvement with the Children's Hunger Fund, Crossroads Community Church, and the Early Start Intervention Program. Ella was aided with hearing aids at two months and participated in the Early Start Intervention Program. The kindness and dedication that the doctors extended to her and to her family is what inspired her to want to give the same care to other families. Ella will be attending USC and plans to study biology pre-med. She is planning to become a neonatologist. The Santa Clarita Valley Scholarship Foundation is requesting for the governing board's approval for payment to the 57 recipients from the class of 2023 over a four-year period. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. You guys are so wonderful. Every year when you do this, it's just an amazing thing. Really is wonderful and special for our community, so.
We need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I move that we accept your generosity, and I do, I think it's always funny that we have to approve you giving us money, but we do appreciate what you guys do and what the hospital does, so thank you so much. And I move this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storely, second by Mr. Messina, to approve the Henry Mayo New Hall Foundation Scholarship Awards for 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
I have a quick question, though. What's the criteria for students to?
The criteria? The students are selected by a committee of the counselors and the teachers, and basically looking for those that excel. They have a scholar, a, an essay that they have to fill out, they have an application that they fill out, and it's basically judged on where we're looking at the amount of involvement, whether there's leadership involved, how much school, how much community activity that's involved, and it's, they're scored. And then these top individuals are then put into the interview process where the counselor, a group of counselors and additional volunteers will interview them. We have interview questions we ask them, and then they score based on the combination of the application essay and the actual interview. There are a lot of times where there are students that on paper look better than in person, so we find that this helps get a better picture of well-rounded coming from all ends.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks again. Much appreciated. Look forward to next year.
Thank you.
All right. That was wonderful. We'll move on now to public comments. This is the time set aside to address the governing board on a topic within the board's subject matter jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. Please complete a speaker card and submit it prior to the beginning of the public comment period. 20 minutes are allotted for public comments at this time. The first 10 people to submit a speaker card prior to the beginning of the public comment period will be heard. Additional time is set aside later in the meeting for any speaker that was not heard during the first public comment period. Please use the microphone and state your name, although it is optional. No action will be taken on any item not appearing on the agenda, and the board president will limit your comments to two minutes. The president may limit public comment time based on the number of people who wish to speak. If you wish to speak regarding an item that appears on the agenda, you will be called upon to make your comments at the time the item is discussed by the board. I will call three names, and the first will speak first, and then if the second two would please stand over by the counter and be ready to speak upon my call, that would be appreciated. First speaker is Rebecca Heineman, to be followed by Daniel Johnson, to be followed Part of your two minutes, actually, sorry.
I just wanted to thank Henry Mayo for all they do. My daughter did receive one of their scholarships this year.
Okay. All right, Rebecca, you may begin.
My name is Rebecca Heineman. I am a Saugus parent. We live in a world that is a colorful cornucopia, filled with different colors, ethnicities, and religions. It is a world of opportunity. When our children are born, they need to be nurtured, cared for, and loved. As they grow, they need respect, support, and love. When we lead with hate and fear, our children no longer have support and love and their confidence withers. When they don't feel included, when they no longer have access to all opportunities to learn, their growth is stunted. We all want our children to flourish. If this is what we all want, then why do we have a community so filled with hate and so filled with a desire for only one monotone color of life? When we have a leader and a group in this room who do not say things, or who do say things that harm marginalized groups, they stunt the growth of our community. When you, Mr. Messina, state publicly, "Men, you need to protect your kids," about a post supporting violence against a woman and a homeless person at a school in Glendale, you do a disservice to those you serve. The vitriol you post about anti-transgender stance puts our children in danger and proves you are not as supporting as you represent. With your guidance, a group of parents have been trying to remove books for a group of marginalized students, censoring their truth. Yet we don't censor the Bible for all of its rape, incest, and murder. Please do not take the freedom of our children for being who they are. Please lead with love and not hate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Johnson, followed by Lydia, and after Lydia is Diane Zimmerman. You may begin.
Hello. My name is Darren Johnson. I'm here to talk about the LGBTQ+ community and what can be done to make LGBTQ+ youth feel safe within our school district. I came out in 2019, and ever since then, I've been harassed, even up to my senior year of high school, and just recently graduated from Canyon High. Over the years, I've been able to experience many things. Being a GSA officer for my high school, building a community where we don't have to be alone when other people bully us or just want us to be different. Overall, we just want to be happy. I even became an advocate for the LGBTQ+ community and to help Canyon High School make it to be a safe and better place. And while that may be amazing and wonderful, I've also seen and experienced harassment for years on end, not only myself, but other peers and students as well. I personally think that students and staff alike should be taught how to respect the LGBTQ+ community, youth, and students, who just are trying to love themselves and do not need to be called slurs or made to feel less than, when they could possibly already be receiving that from at home or elsewhere. And overall, just to be educated on how to be kinder and to respect one another. I started my advocacy to not only keep my friends safe, who are also part of the community, but also my younger siblings who are part of the district. Thank you for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up is Lydia, followed by Diane Zimmerman. Diane will be followed by Cindy.
Good evening, governing board. I've been bringing the topic of GenSpec's policy, so I'm going to just kind of work through it as the years progress. It's 39 pages. I just want to say that in a time of deceit, telling the truth is a revolutionary act. George Orwell, 1984. The purpose of the comprehensive gender identity policy is to establish expectations for schools to best support students with gender dysphoria, who are gender questioning, who are gender nonconforming, or identify as transgender. Establish expectations to ensure parents are informed about their child's gender-related concerns, and participate in any decisions about how best to support their child in school. To set expectations, the school as a whole, on how to responsibly respond to the situations in a child who requests gender-related accommodations. The following gender definitions. Gender dysphoria, for the purpose of this policy, we define gender dysphoria as the distress that accompanies the persistent desire to become the opposite sex or another non-traditional gender. The Diagnostic Statistical Manual Mental Disorders, the fifth edition text revision, requires that the distress lasts for at least six months in order to receive a formal diagnosis of gender dysphoria. Child onset gender dysphoria, there is historically the most common type of, with 75% transgender males and 72% transgender females first experiencing gender-related distress by the age of seven, and over 80% of the males and females.
10 seconds, please.
Reporting experience of distress, and the vast majority desist, 70% to 98%, depending on the study of the severity of dysphoria. Children with onset dysphoria.
Lydia, your time's up, please. Thank you.
Usually desist if they're allowed to.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, next up, please, let's calm down, please. Next up is Diane Zimmerman. Please be quiet.
I don't want my time to start until it's calm, please.
So Diane, Cindy, and then Nancy. Diane, you may begin.
Thank you. Just puberty. I looked this up at FamilyDoctor.org and several other places, and this one was pretty much right on. Puberty is the time in life when your child's body becomes sexually mature. Your child will experience many changes in their body during this time. For girls, puberty usually occurs between ages 10 to 14, and for boys, between ages 12 to 16. Puberty is a process that takes place for several years. You can help your child go through puberty by taking positively to them about what, talking positive to them about what changes mean and what to expect. Let your child know the changes are normal. Also, offer to help your child. Show them how to correctly apply deodorant. Invite your daughter to go along with you when you buy your first bra, feminine hygiene products, et cetera. You'll know your child has entered puberty when these things start to happen: muscle strength, acne, sweating, body odor, things like that. Signs of puberty often don't happen at the same time. For example, some girls may develop breasts at a young age but have no other signs of puberty for a while. Some boys and girls grow armpit and pubic hair long before they show other signs of puberty. These platform, these patterns, changes are very common. Watch for signs of puberty in your child. Ask them to share with you when they notice things, not your teachers, not your schools, that's me. Ask, talk to your parents. Talk to your parents. All right. Emotional changes. Many boys and girls will experience a wide range of emotions when they begin puberty. Sometimes it will feel like a storm of emotions ranging from irritability to sadness. Your child may experience confidence issues for the first time in their life. Fortunately, emotions start to level out by the end of puberty. Most of the time, your child won't have long-lasting issues with their emotions during puberty.
10 seconds.
However, if your child's, that was rude. However, if your child's mood is more troubling than what you expect, or they seem depressed, or have thoughts of hurting themselves.
Thank you, Diane. Time's up.
That was very rude. I'm sorry. That was extremely rude. Thank you. I had a little bit more to say that might have helped out.
Next up is Cindy, followed by Nancy, followed by Rick Heineman.
Our children have been living in a world of lies and manipulation from the woke liberals, and if you do not agree with them, you are called a hater and/or bullied into silence. There are parents and students here who are too scared to stand up for their beliefs as they know that their backlash, what their backlash will be. Example, I would like to read a comment from a person on social media who claims Christians are spreading fear and hate to the children, which is very hypocritical. Quote, "Maybe get involved and learn the reality of what hate and fear of those who don't fit your mold causes. I don't mind religious people. I do mind when religion is forced on those who aren't looking for it." End quote. This quote goes both ways. We don't mind and respect the rights of the LGBTQ, but we do mind when it's being forced on those who aren't looking for it, our children. They are not looking to be taught that there are more than two genders, or exposed to sex acts in books, or learning transgender is normal at a young age. Parents are not looking for their children to be transitioned at school without their consent. So yes, I am a Christian parent who is getting involved. I know the reality, and I do not fit her mold cause. This is not spreading hate or fear. It's spreading awareness that we better wake up as the evil is coming with, for our children and our faith. Perfect example, AB 957 bill was passed in Congress. It criminalizes Christian parents. It states, "If you do not agree with LGBTQ ideologies, you will have your child taken away from you." Christian parents do not agree with their ideologies, so where does that leave our rights? This is discrimination toward Christian parents, actually, most parents in general. I'm not asking you, I'm telling you to wake up before it's too late. These parents and their children deserve the respect you're giving the selected groups. Keep in mind, the longer you guys bend your knees, there will be a time where you won't be able to stand up for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nancy, followed by Rick Heineman, followed by Santa.
Good evening. A parent here has made an accusation that religious families kick their children out of their house because they cannot accept their children as LGBTQ+. She has also asked the question, "How is this practice unconditional love of Jesus?" I'm a Christian, and both my daughters have many LGBTQ+ friends. Some of their kids have Christian parents that have not kicked them out of their house. My special daughter's niece, my special niece's daughter believed she was bisexual in the fifth grade. I didn't kick her out of my house. Her comment that religious family kicks their children out of their house for being LGBTQ is a stereotype and prejudiced attitude toward Christians. She indicates her degree in religious studies and how she supports all religions and doesn't support the force, homogeneity, and fear of many evangelical churches. First of all, we are not homogeneous. We are free individual thinkers, and God gave us free choice to make our own decisions. This is demonstrated many times in the Old Testament of the Bible, which apparently you know so well. She continues to state that many religion institutions have lost sight of the true message of the Bible, a historical book well-written after the era of a man named Jesus, which is loving community. Well, if you're so well-versed in the Bible, you would know that Jesus often confronted and corrected religious leaders, his disciples, and the public for misinterpretations and teaching of false doctrines. In Matthew 21:12, Jesus entered the temple and overturned tables of money changers because they made it into a den of robbers. Jesus was not a fluffy marshmallow. He was the Messiah. You want to debate the Bible? Let's go.
May I just remind the audience and everyone that comments are to be directed to the board, to the dais, and that comments should be civil and should be appropriate for the board meeting. Next, we have Rick Heineman and then Santa.
Good evening. June is Pride Month. Recently, we've been assaulted with a tidal wave of anti-LGBTQ and anti-trans laws in the various states, anti-trans specifically. How'd we get here? Well, the Supreme Court upheld gay marriage in 2015, and Republicans lost a motivating issue for many of their constituents. Roe versus Wade was overturned in 2022, which energized progressives and caused backlash among independents. Not wanting to mention the loss of abortion rights, Republican strategists have searched for an issue to energize the evangelical base. Through many polls and trying different strategies, they finally landed on attacks to transgender rights. First was bathrooms. In North Carolina, in 2016, there was severe backlash. Next, it was trans women in sports. Now, the fictional threat to kids, pride, does not teach children to question their identity. It teaches that it's okay to question identity. They manufacture and they manipulate outrage through pure political calculus. The vast majority of anti-trans bills do not pass, but some do. Even those that don't victimize LGBTQ and trans people, making them feel less secure and more fearful. How do we fix this? Well, first, we need to stop making shameful comments on Twitter and your radio show. It's important to educate yourselves. It's okay to ask questions, ask others, and question yourself. You will make mistakes, that's okay, but be open to learn. Be respectful on how we talk to people and how we talk about people. Thank you.
Thank you. Santa is our next speaker. You may begin.
Thank you. Good evening. There's a lot of, I want to start off by thanking you guys for recognizing that when we start to go down the slippery slope of... we start to go down the slippery slope of picking and choosing certain groups that we maybe celebrate or, you know, give homage to, or whatever you want to call it, it does exclude. And from what I'm understanding here is we're all trying to be inclusive with a diverse population and give everybody equitable opportunity to be included. So I appreciate that, and I commend you guys, because I feel like we're never going to please everybody, but what you said, Mr. Jensen, was, I think, for now at least, that's the best, that was great, and I want to thank you for that. Same thing for what you said, Joe, as well. There's a lot of, by trying to be inclusive and try to be unit, be more unified with people, I feel it's separating us more. There's, it's creating more hate. We need to stop going by these divisions that are being put up by the government, or whatever you want to call it. We're all going to have to agree to disagree with certain things. We need to teach our children to be comfortable with who they are, to be able to come to your parents, to be able to come to you, and we need to teach them to treat others as they want to be treated. It starts at home. All of this starts at home. Our actions as adults was started at home. Por favor, la gente que tiene hijos ahí, cuiden a sus hijos y enseñenlos a cuidar, a tratar a los otros niños que están ahí igual como ellos quieren estar tratados. Thank you, Lord God, for giving me the opportunity to be here and speak. Thank you, Jesus, for what you did.
Your time is up. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda are information items. We have two public hearings, and Ms. Jan Deisher will lead us through the first one, which relates to the LCAP.
Perfect.
All right, Jan, you're going to explain the 2023-24 LCAP to us, right?
Yes, I am. Good evening. I am happy to present our local control and accountability plan for the next 2023-24 school year with you this evening for review. This is the third year of our three-year LCAP plan, so most of this year's efforts center around reviewing the actions and services provided this school year and making improvements and revisions for next school year to increase the effectiveness of all the services that we provide for our students. The LCAP always includes an annual update, a program of all of the programs and portions in the LCAP that reflect on the previous year's plan and progress. Our biggest concerns to address in the LCAP is to describe the use of the supplemental funds, which are given to us by the state in order to provide actions and services specifically to support four groups of our significant student subgroups. Those include English learners, socioeconomically disadvantaged students from low-income families, students experiencing homelessness, and foster youth. Interestingly, actions and services for students with disabilities are not required, I'm sorry, they are required to be reflected in the LCAP as well, but they are not actually part of the mathematical equation for additional supplemental funds. We are required to use the data regarding our students' academic performance on the 2022 CASP test from last spring, which is reflected on the California dashboard, almost like a baseline this year, using scores from very low to very high depending on the category. And all of our student groups also receive individual marks underneath each one as well. As required every year, the following groups reviewed our district's California dashboard data, provided input on how to improve and increase the services for all of our significant student groups, and evaluated the plan for next year. Those groups included the Educational Services Department members, District English Learners' Advisory Council, Administrative Council, Special Education Local Plan Area Director, Parent Communications Council, Instructional Coaches, Community Partners, and School Leadership Team Meetings. Here's an overview of the California 2022 dashboard, showing the areas where our student groups scored two or more levels below the district average, which I'll show you in more detail on the next slides. The LCAP provides multiple actions and services to support each of the areas highlighted here. As a district overall in English, we received a high mark on English language arts academic performance, scoring forty-six point one points above the grade level standard. This was significantly higher than the LA County average, which was twelve point two points below the standard. We have four student groups that scored at least two levels below our district average and will be reflected in the LCAP. Students who qualify for homeless services scored twenty-four points below standard. English learners scored thirty-four point three points below standard. Students with disabilities scored sixty-two point three points below standard, and foster youth scored seventy-four point nine points below standard. In math, we received a medium score, scoring an average of twenty-four points below standard, but this was also significantly higher than the LA County average, which was fifty-one point seven points below the standard in math. Here again, we see two of our same student groups scoring two levels below the district average with very low marks, and that would be students with disabilities scoring one hundred and thirty-one point seven points below standard and foster youth scoring one hundred and forty points below standard. Our English learners are continuing to make steady progress annually. Every year, through the LPAC exam, we receive an indication of how many EL students are making progress toward English language proficiency. This year, fifty-four point six percent of our EL students progressed at least one level or maintained a level four, which is the highest level on the LPAC exam. In comparison to the LA County, we had a four-point-three percent higher progress compared to the county's average of English learner student progress. This is also higher than three years ago in 2019, when we only had fifty-two point one percent making progress towards English proficiency. Our graduation rate district-wide maintained a very high rating, with ninety-six point seven percent of twelfth graders graduating in the class of 2022. Remember, this is all last year's data. There were also no low or very low subgroups of students with averages below the district average. Three groups had percentages, two levels below the district average mark: English learners, foster youth, and students with disabilities, but all three of those groups received a medium rating with graduation rates still between eighty-seven and eighty-nine percent. From our behavioral indicators, chronic absenteeism rose significantly, up to fourteen point seven percent from our last indicator back in 2019, which was only six point four percent. This is a measure of just junior high students, though, so it's just grades seven and eight. And it is also significantly lower than the Los Angeles County average of thirty percent last year, which also saw a dramatic increase. This is an area of focus for our district to provide targeted attention to students who are having a difficult time coming to school. Our overall suspension rate was low, that's good, with only two-point-three percent of students being suspended at least one day or more, which is also less than the county average of three-point-one percent. However, we do have groups of students whose suspension rate is higher than the district average, including foster youth at twelve-point-five percent and homeless at six-point-five percent. To address these concerns, the following actions are being included in the LCAP using supplemental funds to provide direct services for English learners, foster youth, low-income homeless students, and students with disabilities. Action 1.6 supports new teachers in instructional strategies to reach all diverse student learners, and all of the actions between 2.1 and 2.10, which provide all the services needed to run our English language development program for English learners, as well as a focus on intervention for struggling students district-wide, increasing literacy across all content areas, and providing free city bus transportation for hundreds and hundreds of low-income students. Action 3.3 provides support for low-income students to take AP tests and college courses. And all of the actions between 4.1 and 4.10 provide services for our significant student groups, including providing homeless students and foster youth with direct support from all of our social workers, students having access to additional counselors and behavior interventionists, providing professional development for staff in multiple areas of social-emotional learning, dealing with mental health issues, and providing translation services for families, staffing for wellness centers, and fully functional parent resource centers. We have two new actions this year to address some of our highest priority areas for improvement. Action 2.8, literacy. This action works very closely with the already existing action 2.1 for intervention. With so many students scoring below grade level in reading and writing, we've hired a new literacy intervention program specialist who will work with teams of teachers from all content areas to develop a district-wide literacy intervention and improvement plan. Using student data, these teams will implement direct instructional strategies to improve reading comprehension and writing skills, use evidence-based supplemental programs, and continue to revise and improve literacy instruction every quarter based on student performance data. And action 4.10, equity work. We started doing district-wide equity work last year with the development of our district's strategic plan, and then found that we still have a lot more focused work to do. After increased incidents involving racial tension and increased behavior discipline suspension and expulsions, we've now hired a new specialist for equity work under the Department of Student Services, who will lead our school sites and district administrators in identifying, discussing, and hopefully reducing issues of racism and exclusion, and support, celebrate diversity and equity for all of our students and staff. The LCAP is posted on the district website under the LCAP link at the bottom of the homepage. Additional input is always welcome through the LCAP input link that's also on that main LCAP page, and the final LCAP will be presented at the next board meeting on June 28th with any necessary edits and requests for approval. So I thank you so much for your thoughtful examination of the LPAC, and I'm always happy to take any additional questions or input.
Early, Mr. Messina, do you have questions, comments?
That's all. We can't.
Hit it all. You do a great job.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
I, I did have a question, Jan, for clarification. At the beginning, was it the math score that you talked about where our district is about forty-six percent higher than the average, right, or what the state is?
I'll give you the exact number. We are definitely higher than the county average and the state average, but we're still below standard. So we are twenty-four points below standard, but the county, for instance, is fifty-one point seven points below, and then it just goes from there. Yeah.
Why do you think everyone's below? I mean, because I think we do a really good job when you compare us with others, we're heads and shoulders above, but it's like, is the standard unrealistic if kind of no one's meeting it?
It's COVID. When we looked at the data, the baseline is 2019 that we're compared to, and now we jumped to 2022. So in all of our discussions, it's so apparent and obvious that math is one of the hardest subjects that we expected students to learn at home independently during COVID for the end of 2020, and then all of 2020 and 21, and then come back in a hybrid situation. That score itself took the biggest dive for our district, our county, and our state. But the good news is, we actually have preliminary scores that were released early, and this year's 2023, we took a big jump forward. So we are seeing progress and gains already in the work that we have done last year and this year, back in person, where mathematical instruction really has got to be done in the classroom. And we commend our teachers for the work that they've done, but that COVID, I cannot, I cannot say enough about how much it impacted actual student learning. When the grade level standards won't change, but we have to take some time to get back up there.
Well, thank you for that explanation and clarification.
You're welcome.
All right, Jan, thanks again for your detailed analysis and work. We'll return now to the public hearing. This is the time and place designated for the public hearing to receive public comments relative to the 2023-24 LCAP. I declare the hearing now open. Is there anyone present who wishes to comment on the 2023-24 LCAP? Jan, were any written comments received?
We had sixty-two comments come in through the input online, but that was part of the input progress, process, not additional comments about how it is right now, but I will continue to take those over the next two weeks.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no more comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. The public hearing is now closed. So we, we do need to take action, is that correct, Mr. Kuhlman, to?
No, this was an information.
Okay.
That action comes in next.
Okay. All right. Thank you again, Ms. Deisher. We will move on to the public hearing for the 2023-24 budget. Mr. Peszek.
Thank you, President Jensen, members of the board. So it's that fun time of year when I get to share with you what the impact of the governor's May budget revise is on the HART district budget. First, I'm going to take you through a brief review of the differences between January and May with the governor, and as we'll see, there weren't significant changes, and so our financial projections are pretty similar to the last time we spoke about it. The governor's May budget revise provided few changes to his January budget proposal. That being said, most of our fiscal advisors and other state agencies view the governor's state revenue projections with caution. With the delay in tax returns to October, the state is missing some key revenue data. The State Legislative Analyst Office warns that for the period of 2021-22 through 23-24, they are projecting that the revenues will actually be eleven billion dollars lower than the numbers the governor used in his May budget revise. So caution is advised. One of the peculiarities of the local control funding formula.
Ralph, question.
Yes.
The May revise, you know, he was talking about being thirty billion dollars in the hole, right? You're talking about adding eleven onto that?
Yes, sir. According to the Legislative Analyst Office, they believe his revenue projections are a little rosy.
Inflated.
A little rosy.
Sorry.
But no, great, great question. I will pause right there to say, for the benefit of the board and those here in attendance and watching at home, or wherever they may be in the world, because we all know they want to hear about HART's budget wherever. When we develop our budget, some of the slides we'll get to, we have to use what the governor passes down to us, not the Legislative Analyst Office, not whatever the governor's presenting to us, that's what you're going to see reflected in the budget. When we come back after the legislature and the governor agree on the final budget in July and August, we'll give you an update on what the real budget will look like. So as we say, Mr. Jensen and I are prone to say, the budget is a living document. It is our best projection with the information we have today, and today it's right, and tomorrow it will be wrong, because the legislature and the governor will do something.
That makes me feel so comfortable. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure we reiterate that. So one of the peculiarities of the local control funding formula in Proposition 98 is they established a funding model for schools that guarantee K-12 schools a percentage of state revenues. The state applies a number of tests. Basically, these tests look at what is our current economic status? Is the state in declining enrollment? And really, those tests are not designed for the benefit of the schools, but to protect the state from spikes. We're currently in what's called Test One, where it earmarks a percentage of revenue for schools, no mitigating adjustments. You'll notice on the slide that's before you that between 2021 and 23-24, we're transitioning from fifty-point-two to fifty-three-point-one percent of that state revenue to fund schools, which is really good for schools. As you can see in this slide, the changes to funding between January and May have focused primarily on changes to the base revenue and the local base revenues to school districts in the LCFF funding, raising the COLA from eight-point-one-three percent in January to eight-point-two-two percent in May. And I will note that the legislature and the governor seem to be in agreement on that eight-point-two-two, so we are pretty comfortable that that's what we're going to see, and that's what we have budgeted, is that eight-point-two-two percent COLA. Two bottom items, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a few minutes. The two bottom items, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a few minutes. The governor has used two one-time discretionary block grants, and he has proposed to reduce them by 32% and 50%, respectively. You can see... And originally, it was 32% on the arts grant in January, and now it's 50%, $1.8 billion. And the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, which helps us to pay for a lot of those programs you just heard Ms. Decher speak about, where we're really focusing on supports for our students in need. He's now proposing in May a 32% reduction in that funding for the Hart district. To give you, you know, a little... It's a lot of money. For the Hart district, it's... For the arts grant, he's proposing cutting $7 million. And for the Learning Recovery Grant, it's about $4.5 million on what we anticipated we would be receiving. He's using that money in his calculations to pay for ongoing costs, which we've talked about before. That is a slippery slope. You don't use one-time money to pay for long-term, multi-year costs. And so the legislature has actually come back and said, no, don't do it that way. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. For the local control funding formula, the things that are really relevant to schools added $3.4 billion to LCFF funding. That's that change between 8.13 to 8.22. Excuse me. They also are continuing to fund an equity multiplier, which our district does not qualify for. And they are applying that COLA to categorical programs. Categorical programs are restricted funds targeting very specific programs. You can see an example. Special education, child nutrition, mandated block grant are some of the areas where that 8.22 in categoricals will directly benefit our students. So we are pleased that the governor proposed applying that COLA to the categoricals. He is not required to do that. It could have just been applied to LCFF. The local control funding formula comprises over $250 million of our $322 million projected revenues for the 23, '24 school year. We're very pleased that the governor and legislature have agreed on that COLA in principle. And you'll see in the two right columns what that looks like for the Hart district. ADA is average daily attendance. And the school district is not funded based on how many students we have enrolled. It's funded on the average daily attendance for our students. So with 20,000-plus students, not every kid comes to school every day. And so those absences days actually count against the school district. And so we're never funded at 100% of enrollment. We're funded at a lower number, which is our average daily attendance. For every seventh through eighth grader, we're going to receive $10,367 per ADA. And for every high schooler, we're going to receive $12,327 for every ADA. Yes, Mr. Messina?
Ralph, in the old days, before we had electricity, right? We, these were all broken down. We didn't get one lump sum per student. We got X amount per student, and then, you know, we had other different buckets we could draw from. Now, in essence, they throw it all into one number and go figure it out, right?
They do. When this LCFF came into play a little over 10 years ago, they combined the categorical funds into LCFF. And over time, as we've got new legislators up in Sacramento, who, most of them were, actually, the overwhelming majority were not there when LCFF was adopted. Now they've started to fund categoricals. You see that slide. The number of categorical boxes has continued to grow. So we're funding both programs now. But overwhelmingly, all those things did get dropped into one bucket. You are correct, Mr. Messina. And then you heard Ms. Decher talk a little bit earlier. The money that she's working with is the supplemental grant. And for every student we have enrolled in our district who is in one of those categories Ms. Decher just spoke about, we receive an additional 20% of the base grant on top of it to help fund those programs Ms. Decher talked about. So this is a very straightforward slide between January and May. What do the projections look like? For this year, it remained constant. For next year, as we talked about, 8.13 went to 8.22. And for '24, '25, currently, it's projected to go from 3.54 to 3.94. And in '25, '26, to slightly drop from 3.31 to 3.29. And these outlying years are obviously subject to change with each time the legislature adopts a new budget. But those yellow numbers, the yellow columns, those are the numbers that go into developing the budget as of today, because those are the May numbers. School Services of California, which compiles this baseline information we use to develop the budget from all of these different agencies that you see at the bottom of this slide. This is a five-year projection of what they anticipate the COLAs to be funded out in those outlying years, and what they anticipate a number of these other factors, including, you'll see the two lines in there for our retirement programs for certificated and classified staff. And as you can see, we contribute pretty significantly to those funds. As I noted earlier, the Arts and Music Instructional Materials Discretionary Grant, the governor's proposed to cut that by 50%, which would represent, as I mentioned, you know, $7 million for our district. And the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, 32%. One of the other factors that's affecting not only the Hart district, as I'll show you in a moment, but all districts in the state of California is declining enrollment. The state has been declining for a number of years pre-COVID. It has continued. And over the next 10 years... Excuse me. These are the county-by-county declines that they are forecasting with an overall state decline in enrollment over that period of 8.27%. So a little bit under 1% a year. So big numbers. And all school districts are going to have to address this in the near future. Our projections that I'm sharing with you today, just our little piece of that comes from our Davis Demographics report. We work with Davis Demographics, and this is our 10-year report. And as you can see, based on this actuarial study, Hart is projected to decrease 4.2% in our junior high schools and 7% in our high schools for an aggregate decline of 6.23% or 1,304 students over a seven-year period. So we're similar to the state, about a 1% average decline year after year. And this does take into consideration all of the developments that are planned in the valley. He spends a lot of time speaking one-on-one with the developers to find out where are you with your project? When are you going to break ground? When are the houses going to start selling? So those, you know, everything that's on the books with the city is in this.
Do we have somebody here from Davis Demographics tonight?
I'm sorry?
Do we have somebody here from Davis?
We do not.
Oh, okay. Because I know in speaking to some of the developers myself, they are putting projects on hold and pushing them out. So I'm wondering when this was updated, if you would.
Yeah, we normally get an update on an annual basis, Mr. Messina, and we're about six months out from our next update. This was December, January was this report. So what does that mean for the Hart district? Well, the left column, you'll see our estimated actuals, which is where the finance team and our budget team believes we are going to end this school year. And you'll note that the revenues for this year are quite high, and they look like, and they are, going to be lower for the three upcoming years. And that's because we received allocations of one-time funds, and we're using up the rest of our federal and state COVID money this year. So we're booking that as revenue and moving that through and the expenditures as well. But we will have a positive ending.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, but I'll forget it.
It's okay, Mr. Messina.
I know the federal government was talking about clawing back some of the COVID money. Does that affect us at all?
We won't know until...
Until we know.
We know. So... What I have heard is they're going after big pots of money that are unspent at this time. And so the state has been asking the county to track that, and the county's been reporting to the state. And we actually turn in a quarterly report so that they always know where we are. And they have been reapportioning that money to try and get it used up. But if it doesn't get it used up, they're absolutely, will ask for it back. So pretty good financial position this year. But as the board will remember, we did incur some increased expenses last year through negotiations, and that is reflected in the salaries and benefits. And as you start to look at the next three years, and we did talk about this before, we're going to transition into some deficit spending again, which, you know, it's a living document, but I need you to be mindful of that bottom line today. One of the things that we are required, you're required to do as a board is to certify to the county and state what position is our budget for a three-year period. So '23, '24, '25, and '25, '26, that's what we'll be looking at on the 28th. And as you look at that bottom line, those red numbers in line five keep drawing against our fund balance. And we're going to go from $110 to $92 million, to $71 million, to $43.4 million, all things being equal. If there are no changes to the projections, we don't know what will happen. But that being equal, at the end of '25, '26, restricted, we can only use it for restricted things. Reserve for economic uncertainty, we're required to keep 3% of our expenditures on reserve at all times. Should we drop below that or be unable to pay our payroll, then we're in a really bad position. But at the end of that third year, as of today, we are estimating we'll have $670,638 that is unassigned, unappropriated, unspoken for. That's our savings account that we could actually touch. You could look at restricted as money that, you know, you got to pay the mortgage, you got to pay the car payment. You can't touch that. And then the reserve for the economic uncertainties, you've got money in a money market account or a retirement account you can't touch. And so that's all the discretionary money we believe we'll have at the end of the year. So we can positively certify this budget, but we will probably want to have some discussions, and we'll schedule some board meetings, study sessions, and some budget meetings to start looking at where are areas where we believe that we can focus to try and mitigate some of our expenditures. And with that, those are the basics of the budget for this year. Obviously, the document that is posted to the website right now is 220 pages long, and this is just a brief summary of kind of where the state and we are as we look towards budget adoption in two weeks on the 28th.
Need to go back and find the slide for me. But when we have the ADA, and then we had this, right underneath that, there was the extra ADA for special...
Supplemental?
Yes. Do we use... Is that enough to pay for the stuff that we do for those, I don't want to say special needs, but those children?
I would say yes. Ms. Decher and the fiscal team and the administrators have worked really hard this year to really look at what is the best use of that supplemental money. And what I will tell you is that the budget as written today, we have budgeted to use all of that supplemental money and those programs that Ms. Decher just outlined for you. And we're...
So it just doesn't go back into the... I'm sorry, I'm not using the right terms, but it doesn't go into the bucket? It's saved for those particular... But some of the ADA from the line above it can also be used for those students?
Sure. What I would say is the base grant, which is the big number, $10,000, $12,000, that is our general fund. That's unrestricted money. We can use it for whatever the board determines is appropriate use in the budget. And the 20%, that's money that Ms. Decher can use to support those students in those categories.
So we just need some more of this money?
We would certainly always welcome the legislature increasing the base grant and raising us out of the bottom 10 states to be part of the top 10 states in how we fund schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. I'd like to just make a comment for the public. The key concept here, as Ralph has alluded to and he talks about all the time, is our fund balance. And in tax-exempt entity accounting, which is what we are, we're a tax-exempt entity, not a commercial entity. The fund balance is our solvency. So when we talk about the fund balance being eroded from $25 million to $15 million to $10 million to $5 million to $100,000, that's a key thing, because if we don't have fund balance, we can't give raises, we can't operate as an entity, and we get taken over by the state of California. So for us to always be monitoring our fund balance is a very important thing, hence what he does all the time and this report bears out. There's a number of factors that go into the report, a number of pages, as you can see if you went and looked at it online. But it all boils down to what's called the fund balance, which is what we have to use to maintain our solvency and to keep going as a district. And that's the key thing that we have to keep focusing on, maintain that solvency on an ongoing basis. When we get information from the governor, it changes all the time, as Ralph has mentioned, and that impacts the fund balance. So we look at a fund balance, whether it's preliminary, a revised, or a final, and it's always going to be different. And we have to keep monitoring that. It's not an easy job. It's a lot of work to do. But Ralph does a great job, and we're appreciative of what he does. So this is the time and place designated for the public hearing to receive public comments relative to the budget for the 2023-24 school year. I declare the hearing now open. Is there anyone present who wishes to comment on the budget for the 2023-24 school year? Mr. Peschek, were any written comments received?
No, Mr. Jensen.
If there are no more comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. The public hearing is now closed. All right. Thank you again, Mr. Peschek.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. If I could be indulged for a moment, I'd like to thank Ms. Brittany Krasinski, our Director of Fiscal Services, Ms. Valerie Van Oss, our Fiscal Service Manager, and that fiscal team for the amazing work they do in maintaining our budgets. We, our fiscal team is the envy of LA County, and we are told that on a regular basis by the County Office of Education. They are highly respected, and I am extremely grateful to be working with those professionals on a day-to-day basis.
Well, thanks to each of them, and thank you for leading that team, Ralph.
Point of information. We're supposed to have a nine o'clock meeting. Does it have to be at nine o'clock, or can it be after?
It can be, cannot be before, but it can be anytime after.
Okay. Just wanted to keep us all honest here.
Okay. Action items? Action items is the next aspect of our agenda. We have eight action items. The first one is the awarding of a food service management company agreement to Sodexo America LLC. Mr. Peschek, you have this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Members of the board, Superintendent Coleman, it is my pleasure this evening to recommend to the board that we renew our contract with Sodexo School Services for another year, with the possibility of four additional years, for a total of five years. Sodexo came onboard five years ago. We changed food service management companies after a long stint with the prior provider, and there were some challenges with the prior provider. And Sodexo has performed exceptionally well. We receive great feedback from the administrators. Participation is up. Student survey results are excellent, and the program for the last five years has been financially viable. And they have put money back into the reserve where we were losing money before. And the process, we went out to RFP and invited a number of food service management companies to come in. Four actually attended. Our prior provider, Compass Sodexo, was interested in continuing their partnership with us. Aramark, as well as a company called Southwest Food Services out of Arizona. We did receive two bids, not all four, elected to participate in the process. And Sodexo was selected by an independent committee. I appointed a committee with an administrator, someone from fiscal, someone from purchasing, and they did the review. I did the financial review of that. And we all agreed that we would like to recommend the board to offer another five-years opportunity to Sodexo. And so tonight, we do have Paige Skwoski, who's an area manager for Sodexo and has been with us for a couple of years. And Ken Bristow, who's our operations manager and has been with us off and on for the whole five years that you all have been with us. Ken, this evening. But at this time, I, so thank you for coming this evening. And at this time, I'd like to recommend to the board to renew this contract.
Ralph, is it a four- or five-year renewal?
It is, it is one year with four renewals for a total of five potential.
Got you. Okay. Very good. Questions, comments, board?
You seem happy with this service?
Very much so. And not, it's not important how I feel about the service. The proof is in the students' participation and the feedback we get from them and frankly, from our administrators. And so I'm completely comfortable with this recommendation.
So moved.
Again. Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to award food service management company agreement to Sodexo America LLC. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ralph. Next is our resolution number 22/23-47, Determination of Uses of Proposition 30 Education Protection Account Funds. Mr. Peschek, you are going to introduce this as well, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. This is an annual item that we bring before the board. Proposition 55, the California Children's Educational and Healthcare Protection Act of 2016 authorized the state to receive and disperse incremental tax increases from Californians through the year 2030. Both Proposition 30 and 55 combined provide this additional revenue to K-12 school districts. But one of the requirements is that we designate how we are using those funds. It cannot be used for administrative and operational expenses, and we use them to pay teacher salaries. And these funds are supposed to be targeted for in-classroom expenditures. And so we are estimated to receive 74, 704, 039, and we will expend those funds on teacher salaries.
Any questions from the board?
You need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I move resolution number 2223-47.
Again. Thank you. A motion has been made by Mrs. Storey and seconded by Mr. Messina to approve resolution number 22/23-47, as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peschek. That motion carries. Now we're down to our Personnel Commission Budget for 2023, 2024. John Anthony Maraki. Nice to see you tonight.
Good evening. So this is just the proposal to adopt the budget. No changes were made from the open hearing on the budget previously.
And I would just like to say again that we have circumspected the expenses and the costs or the expense projections, the cost projections, the best that we can to whittle away any unnecessary amounts.
Yes, and when we get to the 24, 25 planning, I'll work with Ralph to see if there's any place else that we can try to cut some of the budget.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Questions from Mrs. Storey or Mr. Messina?
Need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve the Personnel Commission Budget for the 2023-24 year. All in favor? Chair says aye. Motion carries. Thank you, John Anthony. Have a nice evening. All right, we have the next item being Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. Mr. Dave LeBaron, who is with us tonight, will be introducing this action item. Mr. LeBaron?
I'm not sure what mine would be, but...
Did we play some music and...
Thanks, a little walk-up music.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Dr. here, who was ill today, asked me to kind of step in and talk about this. This is simply something we do every year on an annual basis, prepare for the needs we may have if we can't find appropriately credentialed teachers to fill needs. We need to file a report with the CDE saying that we have covered our bases and are willing to make sure we follow protocol.
Questions, board? Standard every year.
Yes, sir, every year.
Every year, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Messina, second by Mrs. Storey to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. LeBaron, you have the next one, also on site-based decision for Rancho Pico Junior High and Rio Norte Junior High, 2023-24.
Both schools have done a site-based decision. The Rancho Pico, their decision does not change the bell schedule at all. It changes their calendar. The last time they did a board, a site-based decision, they tied together their PD training for teachers and their staff meetings. They want to separate that so they can have it on different days. So that's the purpose of this. It doesn't affect the bell schedule for students at all. It only means that they're going to space out and have their staff meetings and PD trainings on different days. They call it a five-week rotation, which means every Tuesday, either they'll have a staff meeting, a PD day, collaboration with teams, but they'll no longer be required to have those on the same day. Rio Norte, they want to extend the length of their advisory period, as of course they have every day at the school. It is currently, I believe, 23 minutes. They want to put it at 26 minutes. It was 29 going into the last school year. They changed it to 23 when they changed the bell schedule for the changes for the new bell requirement starting last fall. Over the year, they realized they wanted more time in advisory. So they want to take three minutes, put it back into advisory, which would reduce the length of their three periods every day by one minute. So that's what they're asking to do, and that's what they've approved at Rio Norte.
Remember what the vote was on that?
Yes, sir. The vote at Rancho Pico was 88%. That was with a change in the calendar. And the vote was 93% at Rio Norte.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Messina, second by Mrs. Storey to approve site-based decision for Rancho Pico Junior High and Rio Norte Junior High, 2023-24. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. LeBaron. Mr. LeBaron, you have the next one, also on final adoption of textbooks, instructional materials, 23, 24.
And I do. And with me, behind me, so I'll walk up, is Dr. Carolyn Hoffman. I've asked her to come up today, and I really do most of speaking because those books are tied to the CTE courses that she oversees and puts together. And so I've asked her to make that presentation on those books as we seek your recommendation for board approval for those books. Dr. Hoffman?
Hello, everyone. So after great consideration and collaboration with our CTE teachers from across the district and within the pathways, the following textbooks are brought forward for your consideration and for final approval. All of the textbooks that I'm going to discuss tonight all meet current industry standards. They're all aligned with the CTE model, high-quality standards for curriculum. They also provide students with content and skills that are related to the most current industry needs. So all textbooks have been selected with a conscious decision to make sure that we're looking at textbooks that are actually published for CTE using Goodhart and Wilcox as the publisher. All of the textbooks will be delivered both in an e-textbook format to provide online digital resources, and then we'll have hard copies in the classroom as well. So the first sector for our health, science, and medical technologies, we have three new books. They all, again, support the CTE model standards. They're all approved by HOSA, which is important. You hear HOSA all the time with Valencia High School and the amazing awards that they win. And they're also textbooks that are supported by the National Consortium of Health and Science. So the first one is Introduction to Anatomy and Physiology. This will be used in our honors and our Regular Body Systems and Disorders course, which is our concentrator. It's going to replace the previous anatomy and physiology text that we have been using that wasn't designed for CTE. So that's why this one is better. And it will provide consistency across the district. So all seven school sites with body systems and disorders, the students will be using the same material, which is important. The second one is Health Science Concepts and Skills. This is specific for Valencia High School for MSA. They are the one school that has a ninth-grade introductory course. And the teachers there selected this book because it's going to help to enrich the four-year experience that our MSA students have at Valencia. And then the last book is Introduction to Medical Technology. And that's really important because that really provides the extra knowledge and skills that helps to set our students apart that are participating in this pathway. It is a lot more in-depth than just anatomy and physiology because it goes into specific medical terms. And it also includes a precision exam preparation unit, which is great for our students so that they can take that and have that certification. In the area of marketing, sales, and service, we have the Teen Entrepreneurial Book, which is actually supplementary. And so it's going to provide our students with more experiences to create business plans and better understand how to run their own student-based businesses. And the only reason we're not using the Goodhart-Wilcox for this is because they don't publish that book. And our teachers at our school sites really liked this one. And then the last one is transportation. And this is going to replace our out-of-date textbooks, which are about six years old. And the great thing about the new textbooks is the three teachers really looked at hybrid vehicles and more sustainable energy-type vehicles. So that's it. So thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, we... Is that the presentation?
That's it, yes.
We do have a speaker. So we'll invite the speaker, Diane Zimmerman, to come up.
Okay.
Diane, you may begin. Go ahead.
I may begin. All right, thank you. I just want to thank them for the presentation. And all I really want to do is, it may sound silly, but I'd like to know that Joe Messina had something to do with picking those automotive books and mechanics and everything, if he was consulted, because the man is amazing. And in spite of what was said earlier about him, not true. And I just want to go on record as this is not somebody I agree with all the time, as he will gladly tell you. He finds my faults all the time. But this man loves kids. He loves every kid. He doesn't care about anything but that that kid gets ahead, and he doesn't care about anything about them. And for this person to come every meeting and berate Joe Messina is beyond belief to me. So I just want to go on record as saying that I'm pretty sure these people, if they haven't already, will want his input on these books on mechanics. And that's it. I just want to compliment the man.
All right. Any questions from the board?
No. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Storey and a second by Mr. Messina to approve the final adoption of textbooks slash instructional materials for 2023-24 as presented by Mrs. Hoffman and Mr. LeBaron. All in favor?
Aye, but I have a question.
And the chair says aye.
You started to say something, Joe, when...
Okay, very good. All right, our last action item is Item G, School-Based Medical Billing and Documentation Agreement between our district and Practical Inc. Kathy Hunter. Kathy, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. This is just a request to the board to renew the contract that we utilize for our service providers to be able to bill back to Medi-Cal and recoup money. And so our service provider is Practical, and we would like to continue that agreement with them.
No changes to the agreement. It's just straightforward.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve the School-Based Medical Billing and Documentation Agreement between the Hart District and Practical Inc. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. All right, now we're going to act as a legislative body of Community Facilities Districts 90-1 and 99-1. Mr. Peschek?
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Members of the board, Superintendent Coleman. And over the last few months, the district finance team has been working towards the refinancing of the 2013 refunding revenue bonds from the William S. Hart Joint School Finance Authority. The 2013 bonds are a pooled Community Facilities District financing that includes individual local debt obligations local debt obligations for CFD numbers 90-1 and 99-1 of the school district and the Hart portion of CFD number 2000-1 of the Sogas/Hart Joint School Finance Authority. Finance Authority Board will be asked to consider approval of the refinancing later tonight. This item indicates support from CFDs number 90-1 and 99-1 to proceed with the financing and makes minor adjustments to the CFD bond documents in order to align defined terms and update certain covenants to prospective bondholders. The district's municipal advisor, Jesse Landry, here is if, to answer any questions, should you have any this evening, this is a continuation of the process that we've been on, and at this time, we'd recommend the board approve this item.
Can you respond at the sixth grade level? What does it be?
Jesse, you want to do the technical bit on this one?
Sure.
He wants the sixth grade...
No, Jesse, it'll be good.
These are softball ones, so I appreciate it. So Jesse Landry at California Financial Services. So a CFD refunding, CFD standing for Community Facilities District. It's a taxing district within the community that pays for school facilities from assessments that are gathered each year. The...
Pull it up just a little bit.
So the refunding portion is just a refinancing, like refinancing your mortgage. You take out a loan, and there's a loan and a debt obligation, and there's an interest payment that's paid. So refinancing is essentially being able to lower the interest cost by entering into a new loan that's going to lower the interest rate payment that you're going to be making.
Refunding?
Refin, yes, synonymous with one another. No maturities added to it, so we're going to keep the maturity the exact same length, just lower down the annual payments that need to be made.
And the interest rate?
Drops.
What is the interest rate?
Interest rate right now on the outstanding bonds, and now these are more items related to the authority component that we'll be talking about later, but they're about 4.7% is the average interest rate on the outstanding bonds. These only run through 2034, so there's only 10 years left on these bonds. So the interest rate we expect to get, somewhere around 3.5% is the true interest cost that we're expecting, so we'll see a pretty significant drop, but there's not a lot of bonds outstanding for this transaction. If you recall, we did the, we're closing tomorrow, the 2002-1 bonds. Those were $14 million in bonds. We saved $3.4 million on that transaction, but in this transaction, we may only be issuing $4 million in bonds, so the savings, the total gross savings, will be a smaller number.
Still, there's a savings, though, and it's beneficial to do it. Yeah, there's no question it's beneficial.
And we only have a short window, so it's, you know, we only have a short window of opportunity to take advantage of it, so better to have the money in the district's pocket than in bondholders' pockets.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. How do we get a lower interest rate? Like, the Fed came out today and said it was going to be five-something. How do we get three?
Sure. It has to do with...
Because I like three.
It's a duration thing, and this really relates back to when you refinance your home. So let's say you're in a home, you buy, you have a 30-year mortgage, and you paid this off for 15 years. Interest rates in general in the market might be the exact same as whenever you got the loan 15 years ago, but now you only have a 15-year loan, so it's a shorter duration, so you'd only have to pay a smaller interest rate because the risk is less for an investor to hold a certificate for 15 years versus holding it for 30 years.
Only have five, so I should just leave them alone.
So if you refinance right now, you'd get a great interest rate, right?
Oh, okay.
And so to talk about the Fed, they paused at the meeting tonight, so they did not institute an increase, expecting for a couple more, maybe, I think the general consensus is about 50 basis points throughout the end of the year. A lot of these changes are baked into the bond markets. Before the Fed makes a decision, everyone speculates, and they've already factored that in. I think the thing in our favor is going to be the lack of supply in the marketplace when we come forward. That's what I'm hoping on, whenever we're ready to move forward with this in mid-July, is that there will be such a small supply of municipal bonds that will have the attention of the market.
Thank you.
It's a mathematical calculation, and it benefits us, obviously, and it's good to save taxpayer dollars, so we move forward with it.
So moved.
Just one clarification. As Jesse mentioned, we're going to move this forward in July, and because this is a smaller refinancing, we will be watching it extremely closely, and I actually sit, both Jesse and I sit, online through the entire bond sale, and if we don't feel it's to the district's advantage, we won't move forward.
And to add to that, we'll have only about a month window from mid-July to mid-August to make it work in this window, then we'll have another window in December where we could potentially move forward. So that's what we'll be looking at. If the savings aren't high enough, then we'll likely be coming back before you in November to talk about executing this transaction in the December to January, February timeframe.
Okay.
Thanks, Jesse.
Did we, thanks, Jesse. Appreciate it. Did we have a motion?
I did.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to adopt resolution LB 22/23-11 for action to support the issuance and sale of William S. Hart Joint Financing School Authority 2023 Refunding Revenue Bonds. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. That motion carries. Thank you again, Jesse, and always nice to see you. Thank you, Ralph. All right, we have no more public comments, so we do not have a second public comment period. We'll move on to the consent calendar unless a board member has a question concerning a particular item and asks that it be withdrawn from the consent calendar. The governing board approves all the items at one time. Board, do we have any items that you want to poll or discuss separately or anything along those lines?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Messina, second by Mrs. Storey to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. The consent calendar is approved, and we are now down to items for future consideration by the board.
I don't have any right now.
Okay, and I don't either. So we will...
Move to adjourn?
In our Flag Day.
That's very good, in honor of Flag Day.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina, 9:34 to adjourn in honor of Flag Day. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We are adjourned. Now, we do have a second board meeting that won't take too long. For those in the audience, this is a special meeting of the William S. Hart Joint School Financing Authority. All of us board members are board members of that group, that financing authority, so...
A one-minute break? Or is it going to be short enough?
Sure enough. Nobody asked any questions.
Okay.
So we will, this meeting has opened up at 9:34, the same time we adjourned, and we do need to have a call to order. Debbie, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Messina?
Here.
Dr. Morris not here. Mrs. Storey?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Present.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
And Mr. Peschek?
Here.
So we do have a quorum, and as you've noted, Mr. Peschek and Mr. Coleman are members of this particular board. First item is to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Are you guys going to vote too?
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
We're not used to that.
It's going to be a hard time or something.
That's like, what?
We pulled this item and asked some questions.
Motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve the minutes of our special meeting of April 19, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair says aye. Motion carries. So we now move on to our special item, which is an action item, and Mr. Peschek, will you introduce this, please?
Sure. Mr. Jensen, this is the companion to the item you just approved as the William S. Hart Board, and this is for the action to approve issuance and sale of a refunding for the 2023 revenue bonds via the William S. Hart Joint School Finance Authority, and we recommend that this board approve that so that we can move forward.
For the same reasons that we talked about before.
Same reason as previously mentioned.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Storey, second by Mr. Messina to approve resolution number JSFA 22/23-2, action to approve issuance and sale of William S. Hart Joint School Financing Authority 2023 Refunding Revenue Bonds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair says aye. Motion carries.